Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've heard of you and heard about your story, how you got here. So I think that it's about divine intervention that you're here. So, yeah, yeah. All right, you too.
If you could all take your seats. We have a quorum, so we will begin with the act of reverence and pledge allegiance to the flag. We're gonna have it led by our student representative, Sarah Delos.
Wow, super new I was. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. First item on the agenda is to accept minutes from the September monthly meeting and also a special meeting which took place on October 7th. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from those two meetings. Do I have a motion? So moved. Moved by Vice President White. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting? Any additions or corrections? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from September 25th as well as October 7th, please say aye.
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 Those minutes are accepted.
You have a no, President Evans, because I was not there.
Okay, one no. Next up, we'll move to speakers addressing an agenda item. We have none, so we will move right into the superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. This morning at 6:00 AM, I attended the Career in Construction event, thanks to Unicon and Bev Gush who helped us put that together. Very proud as a school district to watch many of our kids who attended. From what I understand, it was the largest gathering in the 11 years it's been in existence. I have my hard hat to prove that I was there. Got to work one of those wonderful, I believe it was a backhoe, I forgot what it was called, but excavator. It was certainly a lot of fun to do that. Also have a copy of the board quarterly report for contracts under $25,000, and I pass that We are attempting to respond to a number of requests made by Commissioners, especially Commissioner Williams, for that report to provide more information. Thank you, Ms. McDonald, for helping us do that. The second thing I'd like to briefly talk about, and I'll pass copies of that as well, is a report done by the Regional Educational Laboratory at West Ed on the dropout situation in our nation. While the report was based on the San Bernardino City Unified School District in California, it really talks to what happens in a number of large urban districts around the country. That dropout, high school dropout, is not a singular event. We know for a fact that this starts well before high school. But the fact is, if you read the report and you see that many students drop out of high school, do so a number of times. Many return over and over again, they drop out over and over again, until they finally walk away for good. The report also talks about the fact that the younger the student, when the incidents begin to happen, the more likely they'll return to school and stay in school. The older they are, when they are dropping out, the less likely they'll return back to school. It is, the reason I bring this up is because many of us look at dropout, again, we know, we talk very often about this being a progress or process, but very few of us look at the fact that many students actually drop out, it may come back in six months or five months or a year, that we have many students in our urban districts who actually drop out multiple times before they actually walk away. So the opportunity exists for us to capture that kind of information, capture our students and find ways to keep them in school, especially we know at the critical age, the critical grade, critical grade of ninth and then 10th grade. The last thing I'd like to briefly talk about, and I sent copies to the board a few days ago, so you had a chance to preview, is the Rochester City School District Regulations of Intervention and Discipline. If you have copies with you, I'll take about three minutes and go through it. If not, I'll refer to some of the pages. First, I want to acknowledge and thank a number of individuals who helped us put that together. It wasn't done by one person, especially for Jim Shepard for leading the group. But as you can see in the document, we have everyone from the Legal Aid Society to school principals, to teachers, guidance council, central office staff, et cetera, who helped put this document together, and for the legal team and the communications team for editing and going through the document. It is a draft because we are engaging a number of different constituents around the document. The principals have had a number of different conversations. We are engaging the Student Leadership Council in a couple of weeks, and we've asked Nicole Cracker and Gladys to put together parents, parent organizations to take a look and give us feedback on the document. As always, documents like these are living documents, so we always look to make edits and changes to make it more robust as the work goes on. The purpose really was to bring a level of sterilization and objectivity to the suspension process, to the discipline processes in our school. As many of us know, in some schools, if you fight, you get arrested. Noters, if you fight, you may get counseling from the guidance council. We want to make sure that they hang in, we have some consistency. It is, if you look at page one of the document, it is based on the Board of Education's policy, in the Code of Conduct, that is. And we are very clear that this document impacts students while they are in school, on their way to school, on their way home, at school-sponsored events, that if a child gets into a fight, say, on their way to school, on a public bus, we certainly have the right to pursue disciplinary action. Page two talks quite a bit about prevention and intervention. We do not want suspension to become the only intervention tool in schools, and unfortunately, some of our sites, that is what is happening. So we're working with schools to fix that. We also make it clear that parents are partners in this process, and that students are partners in this process. We talk about their rights as well as their responsibilities in doing all of that. We outline a number of different guidance interventions that have to be put in place for a school to really be the kind of safe places that we're looking for our schools to be. Again, the majority of our incidents are nonviolent incidents. We want to make sure we nip those in the bud. Moving to, very quickly, to page nine, you begin to see exactly what we're talking about. One column talks about the infraction. The middle column talks about the range of possible disciplinary responses, and the third column talks about the range of guidance interventions that can be put in place. We separate the levels, the pieces between K-6 and 712, because we know dealing with an eight-year-old is very different than dealing with a 15-year-old. We also passed regulation that schools may not long-term, that is, for suspensions six days or greater, may not long-term suspend students in kindergarten, first, and second grade. It is something I didn't think I had to do, but last year, we had 39 students who were suspended who were under the age of eight, seven, six, and five, in my opinion. That is not only immoral, it's criminal. So 712, as well as six to eight, is there. We also, on page 22, look at the kinds of weapons that students may bring into schools, and we categorize those in category one and category two weapons. One, of course, something like bringing together a handgun, a pistol, that is, really does not give the principal any latitude whatsoever. Those have to be dealt with severely. But at the same time, if someone brings to school a laser pointer before they are giving a 30-day suspension, let's take a look at the reason why they're carrying a laser pointer. They may have a presentation to do at a school. So we leave that a little bit more in terms of leeway for principals to look at why, in other words, that really was being used. Document also talks about teacher removal of students from classrooms, and they put some process behind that, aligning that with the SAVE legislation, differentiate short-term from long-term suspension. We don't talk as much here about the Center for Youth ATS, because we don't really count that yet as a suspension. On page, the last few pages, the attachments, we give principals and folks a flow chart, so it's a visual flow chart as to what the process is. So parents, again, and students, as well as school-based people, understand rights, responsibilities, and process. Our hope and goals, once we have a final draft, is to make sure parents really understand what this is, so they can use it as a tool, so they can ask the right questions of school staff, as well as students getting perhaps a miniature version of this, so they understand exactly what can happen if they do X, and also what their rights and responsibilities are. And that is my report, so. Thank you. Oh, yes. Mallon, is Niree ready? Yes. Niree, I'm sorry. You're my last piece on the agenda. Thank you. Yes, we are. Sorry.
Yes, please come forward.
You're next. Commissioner Elliott has asked for an update on the African, African-American Studies Department. We gave the board a written report last week, and a request was made to also inform the public as to what we're doing with this division. Whenever you're ready, Niree.
I have some material that I pledge allegiance to. Take a look at the first page. It's just a synopsis of the information that I provided to Mr. Bazzard, I believe it was One of the first things that I wanted to do in terms of thinking about what the infusion of curriculum would look like for the Rochester City School District was to identify if the work had already been done. And there are a few departments of African and African-American Studies in the nation, and the one that I chose to collaborate with is one that I thought was most authentic, and that's in West Palm Beach County in Florida. So I had an opportunity to go and visit them and learn about what it really took to infuse the curriculum, some of the challenges that they had, and some of the victories that they had. So much of what I have done in terms of the initial startup of the department really is encompassed with the relationship that I developed with the West Palm Beach County. I am very fortunate to have a support council, which was part of my goal when I interviewed. That was one of the very first things that I said, that I needed a support council so that we would have a representative of community members, administrators, teachers, parents, and students, so that as we are rolling this work out, we're having a conversation with all people at once. Notwithstanding that, I still wanted to be connected to the community, and so on that forum, you see that I have engaged myself in a number of ways, so that the community, I'm promoting a level of awareness with them, as well as doing that within the district. And so then, speaking about the level of awareness that I've developed with the district, I have been in schools, and I've been doing classroom visits, and I have also been providing professional development. And it isn't such that I have been trying to completely revamp or reform initially, but just creating an opportunity for people really to understand what it takes to teach children of color. And that's a huge conversation, particularly, I think, here in Rochester, given the nature of how we educate children. So with that in mind, I've been having ongoing professional development. As a matter of fact, this school year, I am connected with three schools in particular so that the work is not hit and miss. I will be with them all year long, and we will begin having conversations about what it means to teach children of color. Looking at the professional development as it is, much of what I have been able to do has been so, because I've been in collaboration with the Rochester Teacher Center. This conversation about infusing the curriculum and really changing that requires some funding and changing language and contracts and changing the way we do things. And I've been able to do quite a bit of that with the assistance of the Teacher Center, because they do have a significant budget. And anytime you ask teachers to do something particularly surrounding this kind of conversation, you definitely have to come out of your pocket a bit. So if you notice at the top, I've identified the nature of my budget, and I think that also speaks to the, what it's gonna take to really drive this agenda, and what it's gonna take to really infuse the curriculum. In your folders, I have also included West Palm Beach County's matrix, and it's what they've used to outline all of the content that they are going to infuse into all of the subject areas. And so then, the page behind that is actually what it would begin to look like for the Rochester City School District. In terms of going forward, as I said, we want to start having a conversation with how the language that we use. For example, one of the things that I pulled was the teacher's evaluation form. And on there, under the pedagogy part, it talks about interdisciplinary and multicultural curricula. And it just, you know, there's a blurb there about whether a teacher has met that or not. We want to broaden that so that it becomes more inclusive of the content that we infuse into the curriculum. Because it is voluntary at this point, as we begin to push for it, we will have to have a conversation about what it is that will drive the Rochester City School District to begin to really examine its practices and change some of the things that it does. Also included in your folder is a curriculum piece that was developed in conjunction with the Rochester Teacher Center, and that was a response to the fifth-grade summer school program. They were, their intention was to create an opportunity for students to study Africa and connect the literacy skills to that. And I thought that that was a great endeavor, but it needed some additional pieces to it because it just focused on the physical geography of Africa. And so if we provide children with material and it only depicts Africa as having animals and savannas and deserts, then we have completely missed the opportunity to teach students about their historical greatness. And with that, one of the things that we did was instead of focus on the safari presentation of Africa, we focused on the human geography. And so it situates Africa as the birthplace of all humanity. And then the next piece of it talks about the ethnic groups that are in Africa, and so I included that in there for you as well. And there's also a map that we created, which is really huge, because it provides students an opportunity to see Africa on a map the way that it really looks outside of some of the projections that the textbook provides for them. It's distorted. And so what we did was we took the Peters projection, and we put the ethnic groups on there, so when students are learning about who they are, they're also able to possibly identify an ethnic nation where their people could have come from. And that is the work of the department at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions from the board members directed to the superintendent?
President Evans, I have a few questions, and since Niree is still there, I'll go from her presentation up to the dropout rate. Let me just say that I heard Niree say that money may be an issue. I hope it's not an issue. It better happen. Money better not be an issue that would prevent this program from happening. I don't want to hear that, or you really will have me to deal with. That better not be an issue when it comes to our children, and when it comes to children of color. It better not be an issue. That's all I'll say on that one. Now, the next thing is, and I heard Niree say, that this is starting not to be voluntary. It better be mandated. We gotta do this for our children. It better be mandated. And if we have to talk with the unions, then the board is gonna have to do that. This is too important for it to be voluntary. And if they don't want to teach it, go somewhere else. But this is what our children need, particularly children of color. Now, but it's okay that we pass a social studies textbook that's got smiling slaves in it. We seem to be willing to teach that. We can't do that to these children. And the next thing that I would ask, I don't know if it's a part of the curriculum, but I'm hoping that in this whole curriculum, we're talking about, you know, racism, the overt form, and the institutional form, particularly as our children begin to go out into the workforce, because institutional racism still exists, and somehow, we're gonna have to teach our children, and I'm talking about racism now, but also sexism. How do we navigate that as a person of color or as a female when we have those kinds of isms? In this case, racism in this particular instance. So, you know, I am, I think, the superintendent for this presentation, I did in fact, I'm asked for it, but this is something that I believe that if we infuse our curriculum with an African-American perspective, the kind of, the increase of self-esteem and the willingness of our children to want to do well in school, I just can't even imagine that yet. I look at the fact that when I was watching one of the PBS programs, and we saw, I think his name is Percy Julian, a scientist who discovered cortisone. Nobody taught me that in science. And so we've got to be, we've got to be serious about this. This can't be an appendix or an appendage. It's got to be, particularly because we have in the majority African-American population, it's got to be the mainstay of our curriculum. So I make that statement for that, and I think, I don't know if anybody else has any questions on that, but let me go to...
I do. Would you want to finish up your question?
Yeah, let me just finish my questions to the superintendent, and I will move forward. In reference to the intervention and discipline presentation, I'm looking at the acknowledgements. And I think one criticism I have, Mr. Superintendent, has to do with the fact that I don't see a lot of anybody in here who are really working in the trenches with our students, who can also be able to give the kind of insight that I think that's gonna make this documentation, this program relevant. For example, I see no representation from CAFE. I see no parent representation on here. And so, you know, we always want to have, you know, these research-based kinds of programs that don't make any difference, if you really ask me. We really don't get to the core and actually go to the people in the trenches to find out pathways to peace, for example, to find out really what's going on. And so I hope it works, but the fact that we don't, we have, you know, intellectuals and experts on here, we're gonna get the same thing that we've been getting all along. And so that's my criticism on that report. I hope that that gets amended to include people who really understand what's going on with people, with our students who are having problems with suspensions. And the last thing that I would talk about, and the superintendent didn't mention, this is...
Hold on one second. I don't know if the superintendent wanted to respond to your comment. I'm sure he wants to.
Now, what are you responding to?
The last, the last, my first comment or question about the fact that we don't have folks from the trenches who are part of this.
I didn't see them in acknowledgements. That's what I'm saying to you.
In fact, the majority of the people here, I believe nearly 90% of them are folks who work in schools in this district.
That's not, we're misunderstanding each other. These folks are not in the trenches, that I mean, in the community, who really understand the actual issues that are going on with our children. Like CAFE, like parents. That's what I don't see on...
Well, you know, if I made the document, really was meant to guide students and school-based people as to what kinds of infractions would dish out kinds of interventions, and this is meant for the people who are working with our children.
All right, but we have a school, we have a model called the School-Based Planet Team, but we do have these people to be involved. And so I was under the impression that, you know, throughout the district, that's the kind of model that we were using in order to ensure that we were providing the right services to our children. That was, maybe I'm wrong, but based on that School-Based Planet Team model, is what I was under the impression that we were attempting to do when we do something like this. Maybe I'm wrong.
Perhaps for me, I wasn't clear about the purpose of the document. If you take a look around the pieces on infractions to disciplinary responses, so it's a guide for school-based people about to do, to support children in school. So we thought it was best to talk to the people who actually have to use this document to help put it together.
Did you want to respond to something else?
You have some other questions.
Yeah, just in one last one. What the superintendent did not mention is that we, and we were at the, and the president, was at the Governor's Summit on dropout. We didn't talk about that, although you gave us a document on dropout data. Just to point out, one of the things that I talked about to the superintendent in our study session had to do with, I don't know if we really know what the true dropout rate is, because the district requires, and some of the schools require more than the New York State standard of graduating from school. In other words, New York State requires, I thought it was 18, I'm told it's 22 credit hours. In some of our schools, we require 25, 26 credit hours. My concern is, why would a student want to stay in school beyond the state standard of graduating with 22 credit hours? And so the question becomes, does a student have 22 credit hours, and is he dropping out beyond having 22 credit hours, because they may not have 26 or 25, whatever the case may be? That's one of the questions, Commissioner White, in the QA committee that I'll be asking. We need to get that data, because we really don't know in the district, you know, exactly how many of our students could graduate with the standard 22 credit hours. And so those are the kinds of questions we really have to flush out and really get some answers to, because why, you know, why would a kid want to stay, why would a student want to stay in school beyond 22 credit hours when they can get their high school diploma and then go off to a post-secondary environment? And then, just the last thing that I would say in reference to the Governor's Summit on school engagement and dropout is that I heard the governor say, a couple of things he said. One is, he talked about, and also Commissioner Mills talked about, the issue of dropout around black males, and the hope that we can have if these students were in school. The other thing that I talked to Commissioner Mills about was, and Commissioner Mills was on the same page, saying the same thing. So I'm hearing this now as a community conversation. It seems to be that we're all on the same page when it comes to, you know, what it takes to educate our children. And what I said to Commissioner Mills is that we're talking about it. Where are we missing it at? And I believe, Commissioners, that we're missing it in political will. We've got the money, we've got all the resources that we need, why aren't we doing what we need to do? And I surmise it, and I said this to the commissioner, I think it has to do with political will. That means that all of us who are in these policy and legislative positions here at the school board, city hall, state level, we all got to get on the same page because we have the resources. And I would just mention the last thing that the governor said. He made it clear to us, those who are in the education community, it is tough out there financially with regard to Wall Street and that bailout. It is tough times too. So that means that we may not be getting a whole lot of money, and we have to be as efficient with the resources as we can. So I just wanted to bring that up as well. Thank you.
May I? Yeah, I don't know if you want to respond.
Yes, absolutely.
I think she had, the question was about...
Yeah, yeah. The Governor's Summit, I actually was there as well with Commissioners Evans and Elliott. And I'm also hoping you heard from Pedro Noguera, Commissioner Elliott, because he also made a lot of connections as to why we have, some of the issues we have in urban districts across the state, across this country. And if you take a look at our, many of our strategies, you see a perfect alignment with what he was talking about. In terms of the dropout situation in the 22 credits, I believe last January or February, last January, we also addressed this, I believe, here at the Board of Education, and we made it clear to our students and to our parents that if you have 22 credits in the right areas, and have passed the five Regents examinations, you can and have a right to graduate. So parents have been made aware of this, and will keep doing this over and over again to make sure they understand that while a school may ask for 25 credits... to make sure they understand that while a school may ask for 25 credits, if a child gets 22 credits at the same school, they have a right to leave and graduate. That is not something we believe is an issue anymore in our district, if it ever was. Again, I've only been here about 10, 11 months, no longer an issue in our district. I also know, based on my, I guess, more than two decades of experience in high school, that the kids were dropping out of school, really not dropping out because they reached 22 and need to get to 24 credits. The majority, if not all of our dropouts, drop out for multiple of reasons. It's not just one reason, but I don't believe we have any student who are leaving because we ask for too many credits. Many of them are coming to our high schools overage, underprepared, and then eventually disengaged completely from the process. But I guess in short, our parents have been made aware and kids understand that if they have the right credits in the right areas, the right exams in the right areas, if they finish early, they have a right to graduation, and we'll keep working to make sure that we don't lose any more or any students to that, to that fact.
Thank you. Other questions for the superintendent as it relates to his report for the African-American Studies Department, by President White?
Yeah, I would start with the African, African-American Studies Department, and I'll just ask a couple of questions and I don't need the answers now. But I think it's a fair question to ask, what effect, if any, do the Regents requirements impact the willingness of... It is not something that the commissioner is testing for, will they in fact... Be a pipe dream, if in fact we're serious about infusing this into the curriculum, perhaps we ought to be, or has the superintendent thought about speaking to our state legislators or has the board even thought about speaking to our state legislators, the commissioner about changing the Regents requirements? That would be my first question. My second question is, my understanding is that the state of Florida does in fact, by statute, mandate the teaching of African, African-American studies. And the second question therefore would be, has the district considered, I know Ms. Strong has, has the district considered emulating or promoting an agenda in Albany, we do have elected officials there, to change the laws so as to require that we can only do what we can do here in Rochester? But unless, as I understand it, the folks in Albany understand our desire to infuse this curriculum, it may never get infused. And then, my third question is, and I don't mean this sarcastically, I mean it quite generally, how can we expect to infuse this curriculum unless our teachers are trained on the subject matter? And then, the follow-up question to that is, my understanding is that this training often requires a financial inducement. These teachers are paid to get this training, and I see some former teachers and teachers nodding their head. If in fact, we're not, we don't have a budget for this and we are subject to the whim of the Rochester Teacher Center, and there's some good people over there, Susan Goodwin is an excellent committed person to this, but if our agenda to infuse this curriculum is based upon what the Rochester Teacher Center does, how can we in fact control our effort to infuse this curriculum? So that was the third question. My last thing is, and again, I'm not expecting any answers to these, I appreciate that they may take some time. My, my other comment on the African, African-American Studies Department is that Ms. Strong deserves, I've worked with her, I have had the blessing and the opportunity to serve on that support committee that she refers to, and she is indeed a good soldier for this cause, and I would encourage her to stay strong as in any effort. It sometimes is difficult and challenging and, and I believe that she is up to the task. But I think it's fair to say that she needs all of our support, not just the superintendent's, but all of our support. And I want to say, I walk the talk. I'm very blessed, I got to say, I am very fortunate, and I, on occasion, take my blessings and I try to help out where I can. We have delivered our bus, our civil rights bus, our Rosa Parks bus, we've had meetings in that bus. So I, I, I hear you, Nyree, and I think the superintendent does, and all of my good colleagues do, and we're going to be there to support you. And in fact, I tell you how good she is, she and I were talking the other day on the phone, and she was talking about some of the things that she had experienced in the curriculum that she is sometimes able to offer her opinion on. And, but again, sometimes without resources, it's difficult to control the agenda. I've been there. And so, based on that conversation, Nyree and I, next week, and I got to thank Marilyn Patterson Grant, next week, Nyree and I and some students, 37 students from Northeast and Northwest College Preparatory School at Douglas Campus, will go see the movie, The Express. Y'all know that movie? She does, at least one person. Now, that's the story of the first African-American Heisman Trophy winner. We're, and Syracuse, that's right. And I think I should thank Marilyn and perhaps some other people, you know, I didn't have the money for the bus to drive the bus out there, but the administration responded, as they often do, and they're going to provide transportation, we're going to get on that bus and we're going to go see that movie, and then afterwards, it was Nyree's idea, we're going to have dialogue with the kids about it, about what that means to have struggled through the 60s and is there a struggle now? So I want to tell you, Superintendent, something you already know, you have a wonderful director in Nyree Strong, and I hope she continues to receive your support.
I think, I think it's important, no? Just quickly, Daniel, do you want to take the first shot?
I do.
You going to try to answer these questions right here or are we going to get written responses?
I can do both, but I, if I could quickly just speak to it.
Yes, quickness.
With the quickness, okay. One of the ways, without mandating it, which is necessary eventually, but one of the ways to, to roll this out really is to create a level of awareness. And I think for the most part, we do have some good teachers in the Rochester City School District, and their intention is to do right by children. And so, by offering professional development that initially is voluntary, what you start to do is create pockets of people who then have a knowledge base. For example, I was running a little behind tonight because I just left some teachers who were doing a book study with me on teaching children of color. And so, the very, the very first night, we began to have very intimate conversations about racism and perceptions. I asked one question, and that one question alone allows me to see where the heart of teachers are. Why did you choose to teach in the Rochester City School District? I was amazed by the number of teachers who simply very honestly said, oh, I couldn't get a job anywhere else. But beginning to have those kinds of intimate conversation and providing parameters for teachers and, and teaching them about the experiences and the values that our children come to the classroom with already, then begins to help them refocus because they're here now. We can't get rid of the kids and I'm not sure how many teachers you're trying to get rid of. And I'm not advocating for that, I'm simply suggesting that in, in educating our teachers, we just start with a level of awareness and in-year folder is a five-year plan that the West Palm Beach County followed, and I've kind of been following it as well. It really is about awareness. People have to understand that something is wrong. And so, in terms of pushing for legislation and speaking to the people in Albany, that conversation has been started and we just need to continue that. In terms of state testing, teachers will teach what not only is required of them and what is, what their children are assessed on, but they will teach what they believe they will be evaluated on as well. And that was why I mentioned the conversations that we could begin to have with our union leaders so that we can start to shape that. And in terms of PD for teachers, there is a professional development incentive, although no one likes anything better than cash, myself. So those are just some of the ways in which we can begin to address that level of awareness. Eventually though, we do have to push this, we really, really do, because our children are suffering.
If I may, may add to that, the state will always tell you that they're, they're in the business of setting standards, not in the business of creating curriculum. In fact, New York City does not prescribe curriculum to school districts. We create curriculum for, for schools, they create standards by which we have to measure. The fact is that we are the ones who put together curriculum for schools. Right now, we're in the process of creating five to nine literacy mathematics curriculum, bringing back that to a core. I'm of the belief that as a district, as a central administration, we have the right to tell teachers what to teach, not how to teach, but what. The what is our job because we can't leave that to chance, we've got to make sure everyone is to standards. So in recreating, say for example, social studies, we can certainly infuse the works, make sure that our children understand the Latino and African-American contributions there on cultural contributions to the, to American history or world history. So once we create curriculum, we can certainly mandate that it's been, it's taught that way. Benchmark assessments, we just had our first, will tell us if it's being taught or not being taught. Walkthroughs, focused walkthroughs by chief of schools and others in the administration will tell you if it's being taught or not being taught. So there are ways of holding folks accountable and there are ways for us to write curriculum that mirror the needs of our community and make sure it's happening in our schools. We're certainly spending enough money in professional development to make sure teachers have the capacity to make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have to apologize, I have one other question relating to the dropout issue. Thank you, Ms. Strong, thank you, Superintendent Breshard. On the dropout issue, as we have discussed in private, the town meetings that I had in the Monroe County Jail and the rec centers with the young folks who had dropped out, the teen moms, what was revealed to me was that we basically have one transition worker for each 2,000 students that come out of the Monroe County Jail and the detention facility and the Monroe County Department of Probation. And again, I ask, I know it's going to sound like a sarcastic question, but, but you truly understand the spirit in which I ask it. How do we in fact intend to reduce our dropout rate if in fact we only have one transition worker for every 2,000 kids that comes out of jail? It's not going to happen. Hillside Works Scholarship Connection complains when their caseload per caseworker goes over 35 per caseworker. So in other words, Hillside says, we take about 35 kids per one Hillside Works Scholarship Connection. There's a couple of principals out there acknowledging the value of that program and how it helps those kids move along. How in God's name are we going to reduce our dropout rate if the kids that are coming out of our facilities, and they're going back to district schools, make no mistake about it, only per 2,000 do they get one caseworker? They're going to continue to drop out. So until we have the financial will to address this population by committing more resources, and Superintendent, I'm not saying it's your responsibility, but somebody has got to come up with some resources to provide some direct, one-on-one transition support for all these kids that are coming out of the Monroe County Jail, the detention facility, and until we get serious about that by providing that money, we're going to continue to have a dropout problem. We're not going to be able to fix it by having good teachers. You need people who have one-on-one connection with these kids, just like we do with these kids who are in that middle zone for Hillside Works Scholarship Connection. How the heck do you think, not you, Superintendent, we're going to have success for kids that are in that lower zone, those kids that are coming out of jail? It's not going to happen. 1 to 2,000, that is not going to work.
Let me have the superintendent respond, and then I'm going to let other board members who haven't had a chance.
Thank you. I don't disagree, Commissioner, it is something that we will, just keep talking about the transition, especially with kids who are incarcerated, whether we have to talk to the county, the city, or ourselves, find ways to make that happen. But I also want to push quite a bit on the prevention side because once they are incarcerated, once they get there, we are well behind the A-ball in making sure kids don't drop out. And one thing I've been talking about quite a lot in the past three days is the connection between belief, practice, and outcome. We say it's about every kid, we say we don't want kids to drop out, yet our practices don't always follow suit. And let me, again, keep beating up on this situation around in-house suspension, long-term suspension, the fact that 15% of our kids are special education students, yet 50% of our school, students who are suspended are special education. When you look at the fact that kids are coming to a school underprepared, they're not reading at grade level, they're frustrated, they're acting out, they're getting suspended, and the solution has been to put them out on the street at a rate of 11,000-plus times a year. Some of our schools having more suspensions than they have kids, you begin to understand what we've been doing and the disconnect between what we say we believe and what we've been doing. If we truly want kids to graduate from high school, one, we've got to make sure they are ready for high school when they get there. Two, once they get to high school, we cannot lose them. We know, we know, if a child comes to high school overage for grade, red flags go up. If they're 17, 16, in ninth grade, pay a lot of attention. There is a dark humor that some people use, saying if they come to high school in ninth grade and you have to give a parking spot and a shaver, you have to pay a lot of attention because they're going to walk out of our schools. We've got children who are 17 in middle school in our, in our district who are reading at the third grade level, they are on the road to dropout. So we've got to find ways to really address that. We've got to begin to push around double doses, triple doses of literacy for kids who are coming in. So much has to be done on the front end and on the affective. And in fact, to give some kudos to Hillside Works, we've been talking about looking at the population that we have to serve, they have multiple, they're looking at multiple risk factors. The one which is added to their, to their, to their work is the overage for grade. And right now, Jeanette Silver has been running numbers, working with Mary Doyle, for us to begin to take a look at the real numbers that we have to address. Is it 2,000, 3,000? To, again, to be proactive so we don't lose them to the incarceration units.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent, Commissioner Elliott, you have one?
Yes, just in response to Commissioner White's comments in reference to the students who are incarcerated and the ratio, I think, Commissioner White, as well as my other colleagues, that this may be an opportunity for when the new budget cycle begins, that we look at these kinds of programs for the budget cycle and see how we can reconfigure some, help to reconfigure some of the funding for programs such as this.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
Just briefly, I wanted to, first of all, express my appreciation for Ms. Strong, for the good work that she's doing, and recall the fanfare with which the creation of this position occurred just a few months ago. And it brings me back to, to the question of, and it speaks to the two questions that Commissioner Elliott raised at the beginning, the question of, you know, you had the fanfare, but there's not the commitment to be to resources or even an assistance yet on the part of the district that this be anything more than voluntary. Have we clarified that? We don't require the state to do that, do we? To mandate this? So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
May I respond to something?
Yes.
Just, and this was going to be a part of my report from when I was in the Congressional Black Caucus, the state of New Jersey mandates it, right? They have what's called the Amistad curriculum, and it is, you know, the state has to do it. So it is, it can be mandated on the state level. If we, you know, if it's, if it's a community, district effort, it can be a part of the requirement.
That would be fine with me, but we don't need to wait for them.
The answer is no. But we have to make sure we create the curriculum and make sure it's in place and make sure it's vetted properly. But no, we don't need the state to mandate this.
Thanks. Anything else, Commissioner Brennan?
No.
All right, anyone else have anything, any questions or comments around the superintendent's report as it relates to items in his report related to dropout or African-American studies? All right, good. We're going to move on to standing committee reports. We will begin with our student representative, Ms. De Lost, and I would just remind my colleagues that committee reports relate to items that are reported out of your committee. If you want to go off on a topic about something else, you should ask for a point of personal privilege under new business. So, understanding committee reports, items from the Student Leadership Congress.
Hola, buenas noches y bienvenidos to everybody, and muchas gracias for the food too. I just want to say quickly, I enjoyed tonight's celebration. It, I think it's another reminder that all of our students in the district are extremely capable of achieving. This past month, on October 1st, I had the honor of helping facilitate a student forum at the Memorial Art Gallery, and I thank everybody who was in attendance. This forum was great because students were able to talk about the issues concerned and what can be done to improve things here in our district. We are following up by hosting a workshop and coming up with a report that we can give back to the Board of Education, and I thank Mr. Breshard for coming as well. Back on October 15th, the Student Leadership Congress met and we brought up topics that were discussed back in September's meeting. We are slowly but surely moving forward. We have split up into some subcommittees, and some of those subcommittees include student forum and surveys, a partnership with Wasland Commencement Park, and with the kids over there and doing some activities and helping them with their homework, development of a public service announcement, homeless shelter, volunteering at a homeless shelter, high school students to attend a college or university, I know you like that one, Mr. Breshard, and a job fair for those like myself who are broke and don't have money. And our next meeting will be on November 19th. Also yesterday, SLC met with Mr. Jim Shepherd, Director of... Also yesterday, SLC met with Mr. Jim Shepherd, Director of Security, to discuss the Document of Discipline. Do I got it? It's a long name. But we are meeting again November 19th, right before the SLC meeting, to discuss any concerns or questions that they may have, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. DeLos. Any questions for our student representative on her report or related to the Student Leadership Congress?
Join SLC.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams in the Audit Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Audit Committee did not meet in the month of October. The next committee meeting will be on, scheduled for Monday, November 17th at 6:00 p.m. And at that meeting, we will have Freed Maxon Betagula, the CAFER auditor, to review the 2007, 2008 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And that will be a committee meeting of the whole. The Audit Committee anticipates going into executive session to meet with the CAFER auditors.
Thank you. And I would ask my colleagues to please make sure that you have that date on your calendars.
Just one other point, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Powell and I attended the NISBA convention. Should we report now?
Yes, please, you can report on that as it relates to the organization that the board is involved in, yes.
Okay. Last week, Commissioner Powell and I, along with other members of the staff, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Superintendent Bresard, giving you a new job, Superintendent Bresard, as well as members of his staff, attended the NISBA conference down in New York City. And the, what I got out of the meeting was the ability to really network with other districts, both the Big Five districts as well as other districts around the state. And two of the biggest, the biggest issues or items that came up was the pending budget cuts at the state level and how that would sort of cascade, cascade down to the individual districts. The other item that came up, for the most part, that dealt specifically with the Big Five, had to do with the facilities modernization program, especially, we took a look at what happened or is happening in both in Buffalo as well as in Syracuse, and we talked a bit about just what we anticipate here in Rochester. Overall, it was a, it was a good conference, and I would urge colleagues, if you can, to really try to attend.
Any talk of a budget being passed before April to deal with the shortfall that you mentioned there?
Well, the governor has called both the state, the Assembly and the legislature and the Senate back into session starting, I think, the 16th of November. And at that point, they'll deal with the additional budget cuts. So, I think the governor is looking to trim another $2 billion from the, from the state budget.
If I may, actually, next Thursday, the Big Five actually gathered some meeting with the governor's budget people. So, myself and John Skinner are heading down to Albany to begin conversations and see exactly where they, where they stand on, on, on next year's budget.
Thank you. And Commissioner Powell, Finance, and anything else you wanted to add on NISBA, please.
With regard to the Finance Committee, we met on Tuesday, October 21st. We reviewed the September financial reports, and I would, I submit a motion at this time that the board receive those financial reports.
It's been moved by Commissioner Powell, it's seconded by Commissioner Elliott, to accept the monthly financial reports. All those in favor of accepting the September reports for fiscal year 2008, 2009, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. The resolutions were very routine this, this month, Resolutions 314 through 334 and Resolutions 336 through 348. They include usual facilities, resolutions, procurement and supply, and others. Our next financial, Finance Committee meeting will be November 13th at 5:30. I also went down for the New York State School Board Association Convention and the Big Five Annual Meeting. As the delegate that took up a fair amount of time, I sat through the Upstate, Downstate Caucus and then through the entire delegates' meeting. But two of the breakout sessions that I found particularly interesting that pointed to more questions than answers included two fascinating but troubling sessions. One was essentially the effects of maternal incarceration, and I think that's something we don't want to talk about, is our, our children's mothers in jail. There are only two state facilities where women are incarcerated. One is at Willard, which is the only place that a drug-addicted and incarcerated woman can get into recovery, and the other is in Albion. And this presents extraordinary problems for the children. If they weren't distracted and disaffected by school before, then certainly the abrupt exodus of the mother in a family can really exacerbate any other learning difficulties a student might have. The other session was on Asperger's Syndrome. I didn't intend to sit in on that one, but all the ones I wanted to sit in were full and out the door. So, I found that fascinating, and then to see in the superintendent's report that one of our resolutions has to do with identifying special service needs of students, including needs on the autism spectrum, found fascinating. Again, it raises more questions than answers because it's hard to know how many of the children who are getting in trouble, getting suspended, are getting shut out, are in fact dealing with aspects of the autism spectrum gone undiagnosed. In addition to that, currently, five times more boys are being identified with Asperger's than girls, not likely because girls actually have a lower frequency, more likely, just the way that girls interact and are socialized, are less likely to be identified. So, I'd be fast, I'd be delighted to work with your staff about, just to hear more about what we're doing in this district. I know that Palmyra Macedon Central School District has a really extensive program. I'd like to see how we measure up to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Questions for Commissioner Powell as it relates to the Finance?
I have.
Commissioner Brennan?
I just have one sort of housekeeping question. Have we clarified precisely what the current membership of the Finance Committee is? Do we have, do we have a resignation or do we not?
No, the Finance Committee is as, as is.
As is, okay. Thank you.
We do have three members present on Tuesday.
The same members that have been serving. Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Glad to.
I can imagine.
Commissioner White in the Quality Assurance Committee.
Yes, Mr. President, Excellence in Student Achievement.
I'm sorry, Excellence in Student Achievement, Student Achievement.
Why, they, I mean, can you wait?
We are now known as SA, is that what we're going to call it? Student Achievement, Excellence in Student Achievement Committee. We met on Thursday, October the 9th at 5:30 p.m. We had a presentation from Dennis Richardson's staff at Hillside Works Scholarship Connection Program. We were also able to hear from a former participant in the program, LaShay Washington, who is now employed as a youth advocate for the program. The reason why we invited Dennis Richardson and his staff is we want folks to be able to dialogue, particularly the members of the board, to dialogue with folks or agencies that receive district monies. Hillside Works Scholarship Connection does receive a significant amount of district money and, as well as the City of Rochester dollars. So, it was good to hear from them, it was good to hear the results, and it was also good to see one of the results, which was Ms. Washington. We reviewed and are recommending for approval the SUR plans for Wilson Foundation Academy, Edison School of Engineering and Manufacturing, Franklin Global Media Arts and Franklin Bioscience and Health Careers. We are, we also had an opportunity to hear about learning teams and requested additional information regarding the program before making a recommendation for approval to the board. That information was received earlier this week. I believe the heading of that document, which I think came by email, was Learning Teams' Executive Summary. Finally, the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee will not meet in November as our meeting fell on Election Day, which is November the 4th. Please vote. Therefore, the next Excellence in Student Achievement Committee meeting will take place on December the 2nd at 5:30. We will have two items on the agenda that evening. First, we will expect a vigorous and thorough discussion on the legal dropout age. Second, we have invited representatives from Iglesia Educational Centers. This is consistent with our invitation to dialogue with our educational partners who receive district dollars. This is a second, this is the second invitation to the committee, that the committee has extended to an outside agency, as I indicated earlier on, the first being Hillside Works Scholarship Connection. All are welcome to this meeting, and we encourage you to attend. That's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President White. Questions for Vice President White as it relates to Quality Assurance?
President Evans?
Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
In reference to the Hillside Works Scholarship Program, I don't know if they have a more recent report, but in the report that I read, it indicated that they had difficulty of working with the hardest to serve. You know, they do well with those who are going to get on track, but for me, we really have to look at, I mean, we tout this as a model, and it's sexy and all that kind of stuff, but really, we, as a community, we're going to have to try to figure out, how do we really work and provide those same kinds of services to the most hardest to serve? Because they're the ones who are really having a negative impact in our community. So, I'm saying this publicly because I wanted to also, you know, those who are funding this program, the Danny Wegmans, the City of Rochester, we're putting a million dollars into this program, and frankly, I believe that we can do it much more cost-effectively. However, having said that, I'm looking to our community to also look at, how do we provide services to those who are the most hardest to serve? And it is hard work. The program is also, has already indicated they can't work with that group, but somehow we're going to have to, as a community, provide extensive services to those who are hardest to serve. It's going to be costly, but I think if we do it on the front end, we won't have to pay the exorbitant amounts on the back end.
Commissioner, Vice President White?
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Campos, who was there at the meeting, might be able to share some insights as well, but I can tell you, Commissioner Elliott, that my recollection is that they don't serve the cream of the crop. Principal Pringle is out there. I think she has a sizable number of Hillside Works Scholarship Connection students, no?
Yes.
Yes. And, 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 Mr. President, of course, I'd have your permission to ask the superintendent to have Ms. Pringle answer this question and identify that population, but I don't think they're all just kids that are on the meteoric rise. These are kids who are identified as having a number of risk factors. So, I, in having attended that presentation and having worked with Mr. Richardson in years past, I know that the misperception is that these are all cellular kids. They're not. They're, they're, they are kids who, but, but having said that, Commissioner Elliott, let me say, as I indicated in my discussion about those kids that I spoke to at the Monroe County Jail, I looked them in their eyes, and, and these kids need help. And if you're going to tell me a kid who is sort of in that middle bubble that Principal Pringle has, and if he or she needs a support and guidance, imagine what a child would need if he's coming out of the DFY facility. You know he's going to need it, and he or she is not getting it. So, I agree with you on that point, but I, Commissioner Campos, you were there. I don't know what, what you recall about that meeting.
Well, I'm not particularly saying anything against, you know, who's in that program per se, but I just want the focus to be on, we, the, the community has to look at, how do we provide resources to those who are the hardest to serve?
Yeah, and just so, if I can comment just quickly on the Work Scholarship Program, we're going to be voting on Resolution 358, and I'm, I'm doing it with great caution because I am not particularly excited about the results that they've had with the Latino population. They only serve 9% out of the 21%. And on top of that, they're not doing a good job connecting with the Latino kids. So, I say that just to put it out there as something that, you know, we talk about those that are at risk, but on top of that, we've got 21% who we need to service as well.
Okay, thanks. Briefly, I try to, just let me remind my colleagues, it's important to have conversations at meetings, but I, but I want to make sure that we do them in the context of the order of business that we have. So, Mr. Superintendent, and then?
And I'll be brief. I agree, I'm sure, with Dr. Pringle about the fact that we are dealing with quite a few kids who are at risk. It is something we've been talking about, Latino community, and we think it's more cultural than it is anything else. It is something they're very aware of. We're looking at, in fact, one more risk factor in Hillside Works, kids overage for grade, but it is part of our conversation with the high school strategy on how to make sure that we are successful with all of our kids.
Thank you. Any questions for QA for Vice President White?
Q.
Okay. I mean, I'm sorry, SA. Any other questions? All right. Commissioner Elliott, Board Governors, but you also have CBC also? Okay, Commissioner Elliott.
And a couple of other ones if I could, while I'm talking.
Is it related to your committee?
I was at the, in construction.
Oh, okay.
Could I?
If you can, we can bring up careers in construction under, under, under new business, if you don't mind.
Okay, and then I was on a panel at the, at the Urban Institute at Nazareth, where you want me to talk about that at?
You can mention that briefly in your report, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Let me first start off by apologizing for not making it to the Hispanic Heritage Month. One of the things that I say is that if I did not love being a person of African descent, I would certainly be a person of Latino descent because I love the language very much. After I finished my doctorate, that's what I want to learn. I love the music, I love the food, I just love the Hispanic people. So, please forgive me for not attending. I am a Hispanic, you know, in heart, I believe. I just love the, the culture. So, I apologize again. In reference to the Board Governors Committee, let me also thank President Evans for convening the Board Governors Committee. I was either sick or had death in the family or something to that effect, but a lot of stuff has been going on. So, I want to thank President Evans for convening the September 5th meeting. The next meeting of the Board Governors meeting will be October 27th, where we will be talking about reviewing the superintendent's contract, board staff evaluations, and talking about bringing on a board consultant. We will also have, I've been asked by some parents, when will we have the next gathering? And the gathering, if you can recall, is, was a historic event where the Board Governors Committee brought in the unions, the district, the board, and parents. And so, parents are asking for that kind of an opportunity again, that seemed to have been, gone across very positively, and so, I'm looking forward when we can do that again. And think, I think I have a new best friend in Dan DiClemente, I think. So, you know, we will continue those conversations. I think it was very, very helpful to understand each side, and it really is important that we all participate in the education of our children, so we're really looking forward to that. And then after that, in November, the next meeting will be November 24th. And I would just like to, President Evans, talk about my trip to Washington, D.C., to participate in the Congressional Black Caucus Annual Legislative Conference. One of the things, let me just start from the outset by saying that you have Congress, black congressmen who, and women who host these events, but because of the talks around the bailout, I mean, they were sort of there and having, having to leave. But one of the important things, and I think that Commissioner Williams mentioned it in his visit, report and visit to Albany, was this becomes an opportunity for us to develop relationships with members in the legislative, in these legislative venues so that we can begin to, because those of us who are here in the trenches, that we are able to take to these legislative bodies the real issues that our communities are facing with respect to education. I happened to also meet one of the New York State Regents who served on a panel there in, 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 in. in relation to the issue of dropout rates and the impact on African-American males. And I also had an opportunity to talk to him about our legal dropout policy here, and so he and I have been in contact, and I would share some of that in the former Quality Assurance Committee, whatever the name is, I haven't learned the name yet, so we'll be talking about that in there. But as I mentioned earlier, another panel that I sat in on had to do with curriculum and the fact that, in New Jersey, they actually have what's called the Amistad Curriculum that was approved by the state. And they may not have accepted it voluntarily, but they were forced to do it, and that may be what we have to do. We have to compel our legislators to take this on, to show them the value of this work. And I believe, basically, that is the gist of it. Attended a number of, you know, sessions on education, but just like Commissioner Powell, some of the ones I was not able to get into, and there were some other sessions that I attended in terms of emerging leaders. There was conversations around emerging leaders, there were workshops around, you know, campaigns and what have you, so it was a good session. I think that that is a venue that we need to be in, because we're able to begin to have those kinds of relationships to help to get public policy changed, particularly when we were talking about the No Child Left Behind legislation. We need to be at those tables to share our experiences on the national level. Am I able to talk about the other two, or when do you?
You want to bring it up under a personal privilege under new business?
I could, if that's what you want.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes that report.
Thank you. Questions as it relates to the Board Governors Committee?
I have a question.
Student Representative Delos.
It has to do with, have we picked another day to do that gathering? I think that was...
Yeah, we're gonna discuss that in the next meeting.
Okay.
You are welcome to anticipate that meeting, it's gonna be on this coming Monday.
And one more question, and would I be allowed to do that?
It's an open meeting.
Yeah, your mother can come. I know you need a ride, so I know that's your excuse, but she'll come. Commissioner Campos, welcome back from China.
Thank you.
And the CIGR Committee.
Okay, I'm gonna just remark on CIGR, and I was wondering if I could talk about the Upstate Latino Summit that we had here. I am so brief, it's just that little piece.
Okay, briefly, briefly.
Thank you. All right. CIGR, we will be meeting in late November, and we're in the process of putting together an agenda. In the meantime, we've been trying to schedule three-on-threes with City Council in order to be able to build a bridge with them to allow for more open communication, and I'm just so glad that we had such a great celebration to highlight the positives of the Latino community and what we're capable of, because in attending the Latino Summit, it's almost like I got a fire in my belly for everything that is going on in our community. So I just, it was Latinos in leadership positions from Albany, Buffalo, Syracuse, and it was held in Rochester, and it was an absolutely fantastic event. There were 250 people there. It allowed me particularly to network with folks in Albany to be able to focus on best practices, particularly in education, but also bilingual ed. And some of the major things, points that stood out to me was the fact that we have the lowest dropout rate of any minority group. We're the largest growing population, and we're gonna have lots of people who are dropping out. So, it's daunting, and especially when we talk about Manuel Rivera Ortiz, who was in ELL, and he was able to succeed, the graduation for ELLs in New York State is 20% in four years. And all of these issues really just, we were able to bring them up with the superintendent and really plan to shine a bright light on it, to see what's going wrong, and so that we can be able to address it. I think it's just, it's huge issues, and it was great for me to be able to learn more about the issues that are affecting the Latino community and our community as a whole. So, thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Commissioner Brennan in the Policy Committee.
Thank you. Policy Committee met on October 14th. We briefly discussed the proposed contract with Erie Warren Bocis that will be considered as a resolution tonight, number 363. The committee supports this contract, and we will discuss with Erie Bocis our concerns that the superintendent's regulations keep up with policy changes, particularly if it is recommended that policies or parts of policies turn into regulations, and we will need an interim regulation process. Board staff has been directed to prepare a schedule of policies that need immediate review by the board. We discussed at length the parent involvement policy. The administration is moving toward a new district-wide parent advisory council model with a great deal of input from parents, we're told. We informed the administration of our concerns that a new model of parent involvement may be called for, that parents need to be electing their parent representatives at every building, and it is a source of particular frustration to this commissioner that year after year after year, we don't seem to do this or be able to get this done in a timely fashion, and that those elections be well-publicized, to encourage maximum involvement by parents, to be as welcoming as possible to bring people into this process who might otherwise not have been part of it. And there was, I think, perhaps some difference of opinion on the committee relative to whether or not we would best address these issues, either by stronger implementation of the current policy, or perhaps adjustment in the policy language, and that will be, I'm not sure what we'll proceed from the Policy Committee at this point, but I look forward to having that discussion. Finally, once we elect parent representatives, this is an additional concern that was expressed, those parents need to be treated with respect at school-based planning teams, and that means, you know, sitting at the table with the same standing that the other members, that means not being treated in a dismissive or condescending way. I've been hearing throughout the time I've been a board member, entirely too much, too many reports of that kind of treatment. And whether the policy needs to be changed, or whether there needs to be better implementation, we've been having these problems under the policy as it currently exists, and I think that should alarm us. And I think our patience as a board with this sort of thing needs to be exhausted by now. Parents, the parent involvement policy does stipulate that parent input be sought regarding the collective bargaining process, and we argued, or we urged, administration to gather that input as soon as possible. Elections to the new council are to be held in time for January 1st, the middle of the school year, and we look forward to a cohesive and representative group. There are two other items that will be addressed later in the meeting under unfinished business. Those would be the code of conduct, which we have been dealing with through the course of the year, and moved up the date of the hearing for, to have a greater participation by parents in the hearing, which we held last May, and what I call VAN's policy, that the responsible bidder, the changes to the responsible bidder policy, which include as exclusions vendors that have EEOC, negative EEOC, or Human Rights Division findings of unlawful or discriminatory conduct, and we'll be discussing those two items later in the meeting. The meeting, the next meeting date will be determined when the staff gets together with the schedules of the members. I anticipate it will be before the business meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Brennan. Questions for Commissioner Brennan as it relates to the Policy Committee? Hearing none, thank you. Just very briefly from my report, I wanna, I think it's always important to recognize good work, so I wanna, on Friday, two Fridays ago, the same day that we attended the Governor's Summit, Commissioner Elliott and the superintendent and I, I also attended a taping around the Leadership Academy, and I want to just say that the superintendent did a great job in making sure that Rochester will be the ground place that that Leadership Academy is gonna take place, and I don't think that it should be underestimated. A lot of folks may not know, but this is coming not only with a lot of money, but also a lot of support from people around the state. And I'll tell you, folks in the New York State Department of Education spoke very highly of Rochester, and they spoke very highly of the board and of the superintendent in taking on the task of Rochester being ground one for a Leadership Academy for our principals, and mentioned that it could possibly serve not only as a model for the rest of the state, but a model for the country. So I look forward to hearing more about that Leadership Academy, but our superintendent really needs to be applauded for raising his hand and saying, I'm not gonna sit and wait until the paint dries getting here. I understand the importance of leadership, he understands that attitudes reflection leadership, and we're getting that academy, so, thank you. Commissioner Williams and I attended the fiscal accountability training on October 3rd. Our auditor general and claims auditor also attended. We never got our answer as to whether or not every single claim has to be audited, but nonetheless, we attended it and we did find it very beneficial. And lastly, I know that I want to thank Commissioner Williams and the claims audit staff, they'll be attending a claims audit workshop on October 29th. And also, thank you to Commissioner Campos and Vice President White for representing the board with the superintendent at the luncheon and breakfast meeting with Superintendent Pizon from Boston, which was convened by the Center for Governmental Research. So, thank you very much for that. We will now move to the consideration of resolutions. For my colleagues' indulgence, let me think, let me just also mention, if you all may have noticed, that we have a new clerk up here, Ms. Hazel Washington. Hazel, welcome to the clerk role, glad to have you here. Ms. Washington, provided for those of you that may need questions, answers to the questions from the resolutions that were sent, and also, there also are notes here from the Finance Committee that relates to resolutions. If my colleagues needs those copies, I have them here, let me know. For those of you in the audience that may not know, these resolutions go through committees, and also, we review them at our study session, so many of the resolutions that we'll be voting on tonight have gone through the Finance Committee and also been discussed at length at our weekly, at our monthly study session as it relates to resolution. The first bulk of resolutions are human resource resolutions, those are Resolutions 268 to 313. Our student rep has an advisory vote on all of these resolutions, with the exception of the human resources resolutions. Any questions or comments related to human resources resolutions need to be germane to the topic of human resources resolutions. If anybody wants to talk about any particular personnel, I remind my colleagues that we would have to go into executive session in order to do that. So with that said, we'll move into human resources resolutions. We'll be voting on Resolutions 268 through 313, and I will entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Campos. Any questions or comments around Resolutions 268 through 313?
President Evans?
Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
In reference to Resolution 306, I got a message from Councilman McFadden in reference to the comments that I had made in the study session, and the message I received that he's given was, I don't mess with Baden Street, why am I messing with Quad A? And I was just going to vote no, and because I know my colleagues are going to pass this, but since the statement was made, I felt that it's necessary to go on record and explain why my vote on 306 is going to be no. First of all, both Councilman McFadden and I are elected officials. We are policymakers and overseers of the taxpayers' money, and it is from these positions that is, as elected officials, that Councilman McFadden and I are to make our decisions. It can't be based on our positions as executives of Quad A or Baden Street Settlement. So my decision to vote no on the Quad A resolution has to do with the efficiency of scarce resources. The vision of Joe Posner, who funded Quad A, was that of a pass-through organization. In other words, Joe Posner wanted to get money and make sure that other organizations, whose money is an issue, would be funded and they could continue with those programs. However, Quad A has become a program of, has come an organization that functions, that provides programs. That was never Joe's mission. And so, in light of the fact that there are other organizations that have been doing this work long-term, and as an elected official whose responsibility is to oversee funding, to have new organizations to pop up when the resources are scarce, just sends the wrong message, and that's why I'm voting no on this Quad A resolution, particularly because I've been in this business, in the human services business, more than 35 years, and understand that we have to be efficient with these resources. It means more administrative dollars that are taken off the top, more money for personnel. And frankly, and as I said to the superintendent and to the district staff, you know, the money that we're spending for teachers, $37 an hour, comparatively speaking, there are other organizations that can do this job much more efficiently. And so, it has nothing to do with the fact that I've worked for Baden Street Settlement and he works for Quad A. How do we utilize and be efficient with these resources? Now, remember, we mentioned, I mentioned, that the governor already said that it's tough times too. We cannot just, you know, expend resources any way we want to without understanding that we've got to do diligence by our taxpayers. The superintendent mentioned, you know, they do a great job, and, you know, it's been, you know, evaluated, but it gets to a point where, you know, how many of these programs are we going to fund? And so, that's why my vote is gonna be no on this, and I hope that Councilman McFadden understands that it has nothing to do with our executive positions, but our elected positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions and comments around Resolutions 268 through 313? Commissioner Powell.
I would just remind everyone on this board, not just Commissioner Elliott, that the opportunity to vote for or against a particular program is when we pass our budget. This resolution only replaces teachers who have been resigned or reassigned, and the fact is that this board approved the program when it approved its budget. And so, any argument to the other, along a programmatic theme is essentially a backdoor veto of a budget that we've already passed.
Thank you. Any other comments as it relates to Resolutions 268 through 313, human resources? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna do a roll call vote, just so we can capture the no's. I'm gonna do that from now on with human resources resolution, just because it makes it easier for the clerk to capture it and easy for me to keep it straight in my mind. So, roll call vote, starting with student rep. Unfortunately, you don't get a vote on the human resources resolution, but your time will come. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
I have no votes, and let me just state for the record that, and when I get to them, I'll say the reason that the no vote has to do with the fact that these resolutions have a date of September, some of them say August, meaning that they've already been operationalized without the board approval prior to. So, vote, my vote no for 268. 284 through 294 is in reference to the fact that we got these resolutions late. 295, 299, 300, 303, 304, 307, 308, 313, again, because these people were hired before the resolutions were presented to us. 314 through 348 is another set, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk, have you captured the no votes? 268, 284 through 294, 303, 304, 295, 299, 300, 307, 308, and 313. Am I right?
She has them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you, resolutions passed.
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner, Vice President... Yes, Commissioner, Vice President White?
Thank you. Just so that the record is clear, and I don't begrudge Commissioner Elliott for making the points that she makes, but I think the record, it sort of appears that we're all silent on her concerns. And for the layperson sitting out there, I don't think they should have that impression. I don't want to insist that the superintendent respond to these things, but folks who have heard this discussion before, and Commissioner Elliott is absolutely within her right to express that concern. She's done it before, but we've had explanations in the past as, for example, why the resolutions come late. Could we, just so that the record is clear, could the superintendent provide that explanation so that those of us who are saying yes, notwithstanding her eloquent concern about these issues, so that they know, we understand why we voted yes? Could you do that? Would you mind that, Mr. President?
Sure, absolutely. And Michelle, if you want to piggyback, that would be great. It could be a number of reasons. In the case of some of these resolutions, again, part of our issue is that we have board meetings once a month, and we have to hire teachers when vacancies arise, determinations or resignations, or new vacancies are determined. And unfortunately, we can't always wait for a board meeting before we have a teacher in the classroom. So, we strive to never present to the board a resolution before the effect date. But when it comes to personnel resolution, when you have kids in classrooms, unfortunately, can't always go by the calendar of the Board of Education. But we do not mean to disrespect or disregard the fact that we need to present these in a timely fashion, but some things are beyond our control.
And the other thing I would say too, is what I mentioned is a way to ameliorate this problem, is to make sure when we have, when we know that we have a bulk of hires coming in, for example, we're at the beginning of the school year, we could have a special meeting just to deal with the new hires prior to the board meeting, and that will help alleviate that. We'll move on to educational facilities, Resolutions 314 through 345. Can I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Questions, comments, or concerns around Resolutions 314 through 345? These are all related to educational facilities. Have gone through the Finance Committee? 314 through 345.
Okay.
Wrong. Student rep, what's your advisory vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of Resolutions 314 through 345, educational facilities, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye on all except. I want to abstain on Resolution 317.
317, okay. And the reason for your abstention?
I have a potential business relationship with the vendor.
Okay, thank you. Those have been captured. Madam Clerk, 314 through 345 with an abstention by Commissioner Williams on 317. Thank you.
And a no vote?
No votes, Commissioner Elliott.
344.
344, one no vote from Commissioner Elliott. We will now move on to 346 and 340, 346 and 347, which is procurement and supply. May I have a motion to accept, I mean, may I have a, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any comments or questions around Resolutions 346 through 347? Our student rep, what is your advisory vote?
Yes.
All those in favor of Resolutions 346 and 347, say aye.
Aye.
Any no's on 346 and 347? Any no's on 346 and 347? Okay, the ayes have it. That passes. Resolutions 348 through 372 are in our category of other. May I have a motion to approve?
Just point of order. You want to take them all together, including the policy adoptions and everything all in one lump?
I'll entertain a motion to separate if you wanted to make one.
At the question.
Well, that might be appropriate for Resolution 372. I don't know about the others, but, okay. All right, is there a, any objection to separating Resolution 372? Okay, then. We'll do 348 through 371. I would just note that some of these are policy adoptions and other things that folks should have read those in the packet. So, a motion for Resolution 348 through 371, may I have a motion, please? So moved. Moved by Vice President White. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell for Resolutions 348 through 371. Discussion around Resolutions 348 through 371? Any discussion? Good. Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor of 348 through 371, please say aye. All right.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On 351, I abstain.
Okay.
And on 363, I vote no.
Okay. Madam Clerk, on 351, Commissioner Williams abstains. And your reason for the abstention?
I sit on the board.
Okay, he's a board member. And 363, he votes no. Any other no's on that block of resolutions, Commissioner Elliott?
President Evans.
Yes.
Oh, you just knew I had no's, huh?
No.
I vote no on 354, 358. And I mentioned to my chairperson of the Policy Committee that I'm voting no on 365, simply because I have not been at the meetings and have not read the policy. And that's only, the only reason why I'm not voting yes on this policy.
Okay. No's for Commissioner Elliott are 354 through 358. Any others? Okay, the ayes have it. Those resolutions passed. Commissioner Powell, would you like to announce the gifts, please?
Thank you.
We have to do 372. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we, yeah, announce the gifts and then we'll do 372.
Mr. President.
Hold on one second. I'm going to let Commissioner Powell announce the gifts, then we'll go to your question, and then we're going to go to Resolution 372, okay? Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. You know, sometimes things happen over time. You become the one in charge of something, and this is my favorite thing to be in charge of. We have a $1,000 gift from Robert Bohmeyer, Community Foundation. We have another $1,000 gift from Walmart, specifically for use on school uniforms at School 29. $1,500 donation from Genesee Valley Bosse's for instructional supplies at Charlotte, and a $580 gift from the Arts and Cultural Council of Greater Rochester. So, to the community, thank you for their generosity.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. And student representative, De Los, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm normally not giving my resolutions when you guys are giving my resolutions. Like, I got mine yesterday.
Oh, well, well, we got to make sure we fix that. Can you please make sure that you see Joanne Feen?
And I was wondering, am I able to also submit questions because I had questions coming?
Absolutely, absolutely. You are, you are the student rep. You represent the students. And I give a lot of students your phone number to complain, so.
I was trying to complain.
So, please, so please check with Joanne Feen and make sure that you get your packet. And also, when you have questions, you need to connect with Hazel Washington to submit questions. Okay, now, now, I don't expect to see you at study sessions because you need to be at Wilson in the morning. Don't show up to the study session.
Always change it.
That's right.
For education.
Right, thank you. We will now move to Resolution Number 372. I'll entertain a motion to accept Resolution 372. So moved. Moved by Commissioner White. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Questions and comments around Resolutions 372? Vice President White?
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution came before the Students Excellence and Student Achievement Committee. I'm going to get it. Give me time. Excellence and Student Achievement Committee, all right? And the administration presented this initiative called Learning Teams. And Commissioner Campos and I were in attendance at that meeting, and we asked some direct questions about basically the track record of, I believe it's Pearson's Achievement Solutions, I think is the name of the company. And the staff there weren't able to give the answers to the questions, I believe, to our satisfaction. And so, the administration provided some additional information by way of an email or a hard copy. I did in fact receive mine, and it gave some background on learning teams and the approach that this person has. It gave some data indicating their achievement results. The amount of the resolutions, as my colleagues can see, is $189,028.0. And sum and substance, the purpose of this particular resolution is to give this amount of money, or nothing, an amount, not to exceed this amount, to Monroe High School for the purpose of having Pearson's implement this learning teams approach at Monroe High School and Lincoln Park School Number 44. And one of the things that this committee, Excellence and Student Achievement, has a track record of asking is, what is your track record? You all right back there? What is your track record? And what can we expect for you to do for district schools? And as I indicated, the administration did provide us a summary of what they had done. But the problem here is not so much that this is a bad idea, but I want to point out two things. One, I want to say quite candidly, when the district staff come before this committee, my impression is, and I, I think other colleagues may share this, that they were not prepared to make the argument for this amount of money for this particular initiative. And I've got to say to a superintendent who deserves everybody's applause, we have, we have certainly gotten our money's worth from you already. But, but our concern is about money we're giving to other people. And board members are entitled, and I know the superintendent doesn't question this, to ask these questions. But I got to tell you, we're not always getting the answers. And it was a bit disappointing to see people who I know are competent, intelligent, articulate people unable to answer the questions that we were putting before them. If you're going to bring an initiative before us, be in a position to describe and defend that initiative. And it just did not appear that they were capable of doing that. And from that, Superintendent, I got the impression that they really weren't cheerleaders for this program. That's the impression I got. And I guess in the future, because I have such great confidence in you, my inclination is to vote for this, confidence in you personally and professionally. But in the future, if you're going to send somebody to offer up an initiative at this amount of money, I would respectfully suggest that you send, for example, Pearson's. And the principal from Monroe, she was there, and the principal from 44, but they weren't the best cheerleaders for this initiative because I don't think they were really schooled on or even committed to the notion that learning teams could really effectuate change in their district. That's just my honest assessment. I just didn't, as the kids say, I didn't feel it from them. And when you're talking about $189,000, you ought to get the sense that the people that are coming before you really believe it. And so, this is going to sound like I'm equivocating, but I will support this, but only because I have confidence in you. I am not committed to this notion that Pearson's can do the job, because you didn't send the people to sell the idea to us. You sent the wrong people. And you have some good people on your team. They just were the wrong people to do this.
And if I can just add to that, once, some of the questions that I had asked in the committee meeting were, okay, so, does the $189,000, is it strictly for the two schools, or is it for more? And how are we going to select them? And how many more schools? What's the plan of attack? And why were these two schools selected? And just what, what were the outcomes that they expected? But I, and I got, I appreciate the executive summary, which helped with providing evidence as to how it's been successful, but none of those questions were answered and they were raised in the committee.
My understanding was the question was around the data, the proven data, the track record, which is what I provided. So, if there were more questions, I did not, I did not get them. Michelle, if you want to support me on this, come up for a second. But the program was chosen for Monroe specifically because, we'll go back to the dream schools concept, we did not select Monroe as a dream school, although they qualified to be a dream school. We didn't have the capacity with the current program to add another school. So, we thought this was a great option for them. I'm surprised that Vicky at Monroe could not explain or cheerlead the program because she met with Pearson. It's not Pearson Solutions, Pearson Education.
I'm sorry.
And Vicky did meet with the individuals from Pearson. My conversations have been rather impressive. She was very happy. What she's been doing at the school for so far this year and the end of last year sort of mirrors us a little bit. So, this provides a level of expertise to creating this. The work really is around professional learning communities, managing teacher teams, doing basically lesson study and looking at what they do, their practices, and move that to a new level. When you look at a school like Monroe, which I believe is in the second year of SER, we had to put something in place to support them. We have a number of other schools in Dream, and it's unfortunate they were not part of the initiative. And I don't, Mr. Ramos has been asking, you know, what kind of support am I going to get? Because I'm in the same board, these are the individuals, and this is what this was really all about. And I guess in the future, if I have an initiative, I should be there to talk about the program. I have seen it in action in a number of schools, and I've seen the results. If you take a look at the executive summary, clearly outlines the different districts across the country, where, and the results they have produced. The fact is that I was very reluctant to ask Pearson to be here because I do not want the vendor to be the one selling the program. The folks who have to use it have to be sold on it. And I know from my conversation with Vicky, she is sold on it. And from what I hear from Diana Hernandez at 44, that she sold on it. And again, I apologize if they could not articulate that to your satisfaction. So, in the future, I'll make it my best effort to actually be there. Michelle, if you want to add anything?
Both, excuse me, can you hear me?
Yep.
Both principals had an opportunity to meet with Dan Shamas from, from the Pearson Company. Both of them understood fully what it was that the company had to offer them. They were going to have, or they will have an opportunity to have consultants with them, or service providers is more of what it is than it is a consultancy. But have an opportunity to work directly with their teachers, to look at the way their practice looks in the classroom. They reflect upon their own practice, and then think about looking at the children's student, the student achievement as well. Looking at how the student achievement is related to their instructional practice, and whether or not what they're doing is really causing students to do as well as they are or not as well as they are, and really having the time. Teachers complain all of the time about not having time to take a look at and reflect upon what they need to do in order to move forward. This gives them that opportunity and an extra pair of eyes to help them to look at with an objective point of view, what it is they're doing or not doing that may be able to move their students forward.
And in one school in particular, where I was actually part of work, a school in Brooklyn, which was a SER school, a 612, which came off the SER within a year with their work with the learning teams. You know, Dr. Pizon, yesterday, if you remember, he said that leadership is only second to quality classroom instruction. So, it really is our purpose to get teachers to study their practice, to sit and look at what they do every single day, especially perhaps around English language learning instruction at places like Monroe, to reflect and understand the practices. It also opens the door to a network of schools across the country that have been using this kind of service to do the kind of work. And again, the one thing, it's not just for two schools. It starts with two schools to really embed the practice. What we want to do is actually open it up to a network of schools around the city to come and observe and be part of a study. So, the other schools we have not chosen because we do not want to force principals to do this. It is a change in practicing culture. They have to opt into it. And they will be able to be part of a larger group conversation and observe what's happening in the small teams. They won't get, the other schools will not get the intense services of Pearson. Monroe and 44 will, but other schools will benefit by being part of larger group conversations, as well as watching and studying and observing what Monroe is doing as they march toward proficiency.
I think it's also important to note that School 44, while it's one of our schools that may not be at the very bottom of the list, what the principal really noted was, it is time to do something there because the scores are either static or beginning to slip. And one of the things that we do sometimes is we wait until our schools get in such a condition that we have to really pull and pick them up before we do intensive work with them. It's a good staff at School 44, but there's some work to be done as the scores are beginning to slip a little. And that was the point that Diana Hernandez made. And she's welcoming this program in the school so that her school doesn't continue that downward slide.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, Jean-Claude, I'll just use your phrase, watching, studying, and observing. All I'm telling you is, I was watching, I was studying, and I was observing your staff. And they, this is just my impression, and perhaps it's the lawyer in me, they weren't convinced. I'm telling you. And I wouldn't even be here because I have such great confidence in your ability and your experience, but I was not convinced. And I don't think I was the only person who saw that in them. And I don't mean to tell on folks, but I've spent time at Monroe. I think I do know the quality of principal that you have there and the quality of work that she's doing there. And I wasn't convinced by her presentation. Lord knows, I'm not trying to get her in trouble, but I'm trying to have an honest discussion about what is required when you ask the Excellence Student, help me out here, Excellence in Student Achievement Committee to examine the quality of programming, come to us with some quality programming and be in a position to articulate what that quality is. It just was not there. Now, let me say on the follow-up material, and I'll be willing to admit, maybe this is the lawyer in me, but I got, I'm looking at the executive summary. This is what we get in response to Commissioner Campos's questions about what's the quality of the history. I get a line that reads, "And has been successfully implemented in Los Angeles, Topeka, New York City Region, eight public schools." From my perspective, and there's another, at least one other lawyer out here, from my perspective, I read what that doesn't say. It says, "Has been successfully implemented." What a, and I don't know this is true, but are there other schools where it wasn't successfully implemented? And that's the quality of examination I think the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee wants to do. We want to examine, and when you give us a resolution, not you personally, a week or two before it's come before the board, that doesn't allow us to do the excellence that we need to do. So I would, I intend, Mr. President, I appreciate your indulgence, I intend on voting in favor of this, but I wanted to be clear that I'm doing this because I have confidence in your excellence and your experience.
If I may, we actually have been talking about this work going back since August. It didn't start a couple of weeks ago. Part of our challenge is to find the money to actually pay for it. Vicky and I talked about this, I believe, last June about learning teams and the possibilities. And went back and forth in negotiations, et cetera. I mean, again, I want to be clear too, that this is a marriage between a school, community, and a vendor looking to provide the kinds of capacity building that needs to happen. And if the school is not bought in to the process, they will not succeed. There is a time issue. If we don't start soon, the year is actually gone from us. But if the board requires, I have no issue honestly tabling this, having them come to present as well, come back and do this again. The only drawback in this, only downside is that time is lost in doing this. But again, really, I want to make sure that we are comfortable. I am comfortable with Pearson. I've seen their work. And if the school, again, the work has to be done by teachers and by principal without question, no matter who you put in there. Even our dream schools with Lou Smith doing an amazing job of transformation, the work still goes back to the folks who do this day in and day out. So if there isn't that, that is a problem. And I have no qualms about stopping something if I don't see it. Right now, we're talking about even Franklin with money that came by way of a leasing. And if I'm not satisfied with the work, even though it was a gift given to the district, I will not throw away taxpayer dollars. It is not my intent. I know it works, but again, the work has to be done by Vicky's team and we'll follow up with Michelle to make sure that it is something they want to do.
Thank you.
And I was told that they did.
Commissioner Powell.
I want to express my sympathy for Commissioner White's position. It's not the first time in the history of the board that we've faced that sort of dilemma of receiving a lightweight presentation. And there's a lot of reasons why a presentation might really not meet the test. Lack of preparation is one of them, a lack of respect for the role of the board, it could be a huge part of it, or a lack of context in the broader vision from the superintendent could come into play, especially around the questions that Commissioner Campos was asking. You know, is it going to be expanded? How, what's the strategy for expansion and so on? They may not even know the context. In my history in the military, we would prepare decision briefs and we'd never present, make a presentation to the commander without rehearsing it. One answer is for the super, to the dilemma is for the superintendent to be present, as he himself suggested. But another answer is to have the presentation rehearsed either by the superintendent or by the chair of the committee to whom it's being presented and point out the shortcomings of the presentation so that when it comes to the larger audience, you know, the chair, for instance, can be probing with questions that he thinks his committee would ask. And that's a solution that's been done before. I can clearly recall an occasion back when Dr. Janey was still with us where he was absolutely mortified with the quality of the presentation. And he swore to me at that point that he wasn't going to let anybody stand in front of my committee again, that he didn't rehearse. So I know it takes time, but as the governing body of the board, I think we deserve some effort being put into the presentations brought to us.
Thank you.
President.
Yes. Commissioner Elliott.
I just want to share my comments around this discussion as well. I feel like I'm a part of the team now. I've been, feel like I've been all alone for such a long time. But I think where, and I'm speaking directly to my colleagues, what I think has happened is that the district is so used to having a 7-0 vote or a 6-1 vote that they just assumed that we would accept anything. Not only with this resolution, but under new business, I'll be talking about Encompass. And I think that we have to, Mr. Superintendent, we have to make sure, as Commissioner Powell said, as this body has, who spoke and has so eloquently said, you know, you can't bring us a jump because some of us know how to ask the right questions. Please bring us the right information because we know what we're doing and how to interpret the data. And if you've gotten this, if you have a qualm about this resolution, I prefer to vote no or to have it tabled so that we can get the right information because it really falls on us. In the past, I've heard, you know, people on the district staff, and this is before Superintendent Bazar, well, the board approved it. I've heard that in the community. I heard it in the paper. Well, the board approved it. And so I think that at some point, we have to push back and say, it is unacceptable. Thank you.
Okay, point of order. Unfortunately, we come up to the 8:30 timeframe. I don't know why we have this written in our bylaws, but we do. I need a motion to extend the time past 8:30. Moved by Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner White, who would now go for five more minutes. So this is going to have to be a quick meeting. No, just kidding. We'll continue until we're finished. Any other comments around Resolutions 372?
Can we make a motion to table it?
We already have, we have a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution. And the motion has been made, so we have to deal with that motion that's on the floor. So any other comments or discussions around the motion?
Actually, yes. Just briefly. 372 still?
Yes, 372.
I'm going to just briefly make myself obnoxious about this topic, just a little bit, just for the sake of prolonging the meeting, which I know you want me to do, Malik, and also to, I agree with everything that's been said here about the quality of some of the information and presentations we hear. You know, I, but I'm listening to it and I'm wondering how often those of us up here rehearse our presentations and our comments. I can tell you, you know, everybody has a bad day now and then in terms of the presentations they give. These are human beings that come before us. And if there are substantive, now if there is substantive information withheld from us, that's really a serious matter. If there are questions that can't be answered when they're asked, that's a serious matter. And certainly, we would all like our presentations to be more polished. I don't know about you, I go home from practically every meeting thinking, oh, if I had just said, or I wish I hadn't said that, my God, what was I thinking? And, you know, that's kind of a universal experience. So I would just like the discussion to maybe be balanced a little bit. You know, we could do a little better job ourselves sometimes, I think, of preparing our comments. And while the criticism is reasonable and our frustration is real, you know, I think that there ought to be some balance to the discussion. I appreciate what the staff does most of the time. And these are difficult jobs that we have here. And, you know, I just think that there ought to be some balance in weighing and discussing this.
Right. And just let me say briefly too, before I call the question into resolution, it is absolutely imperative too, that when we, when board members request information, that they read the information. I can't stress that enough. I mean, this is not, it's very important that we all do our part, and I'm talking to my colleagues now, that we request something that we actually read, even if it means staying up late until 2:00 in the morning. Very important. Anything else on Resolutions 372? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Resolution 372, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no.
No.
We have one no. And I'm sure the superintendent will be giving us an update by way of his weekly letter as this program gets off the ground on the movement of it. That concludes the resolution portion of this meeting. We have two items under unfinished business. We discussed these items at two previous board meetings. But however, I will entertain any other discussion that we want to have. We had a long conversation last board meeting about the code of conduct and also a long conversation last meeting about the responsible bidder policy. The first item, the code of conduct, Commissioner Brennan, it came out of your committee, so if there are any other comments you want to make, I know you spoke last meeting to this, but if you want to.
We discussed this at great length. I'd just be interested in other people's comments. I've had more than enough to say about it over the course of the past year. And we discussed it at some length, I think, at the last meeting where I guess I raised again the question of what we were doing to see that there was uniform enforcement of our standards and rules.
Commissioner Powell.
Point of order, we have in fact voted on it.
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't know, yes, I don't know if there's any other, we have voted on the code of conduct, but I don't know if there's any other discussion anyone wanted to have on it. Okay, good. Other than follow the code of conduct, it goes for board members also. I'm sorry, I have to rule you out of order. And you have to, because, you know, we're in the midst of a meeting, but if you did have a question, please feel free to write it down. You can give it to the clerk and maybe she can answer it for you. The next item on the agenda is the responsible bidder policy. Questions or comments around the responsible bidder policy? We discussed this also at the last meeting, and I believe we have voted on it already. Does anyone else have anything else? Commissioner White?
Yep. First of all, Commissioner Brennan wants to call this my resolution, but in fact.
I'm going to change the title to Van's Law.
It's not in legalese language. Nobody understands.
I didn't write this, of course. We had the able work of the folks from the legal department, and I want to thank Council for, and her staff. Mr. King, I think, was responsible for this before Council got here. So I want to thank them for doing that. But I do want to thank Commissioner Brennan for, as he's done on a number of occasions, shepherding important policy through his committee. I know it is not an easy task because his committee seems to be the spokes hub of all the important pieces of board policy that come before this entire body. So thank you, Commissioner Brennan. And I do want to note, because I don't think this moment should pass unnoticed, that the previous responsible bidder policy, 67225, required that our, the district financial officer take into account, for example, OSHA violations, any bidder who had, for example, violations of environmental conservation law had to be examined. Anybody who had a criminal conviction had to be examined with respect to whether they were a responsible bidder. But now, as a result of the vote a few minutes ago, we now also require that anybody who has had an adverse determination or administrative ruling issued against them by the EEOC or the Human Rights Division also would be examined with respect to whether they're a responsible bidder. This is a significant step for this community. We're now saying, if you violate state or federal civil rights or human rights laws, you cannot be the beneficiary of district largess, or at least not until we are satisfied that you're no longer violating those important laws that we hold so sacred. So I do think it's important, even though we voted on it as now board policy, I think it's important that we recognize the good work that we do and how serious we are about our responsibilities. So thank you, Commissioner Brennan, and thank you for the colleagues who have voted on this amendment unanimously.
Thank you, Vice President and, Mr. Vice President and colleagues. A member of our audience asked a very good question. She asked if the code of conduct was the same as the discipline, discipline policy that the superintendent rolled out. And I would say, and my answer was, no, they're not the same. This guides how it's supposed to be carried out. This is, I see this more so as a superintendent's directives on how we're supposed to carry this out. It's almost after legislation is passed, how that legislation should be implemented, and that's what governs that. Anything else on code of conduct or responsible bidder before we move to new business? Okay. Under new business, we have board goals. As you all may know, the Board Governance Committee convened at least two meetings and also a retreat to discuss board goals. You have those in front of you. Commissioner Elliott, anything you want to say on board goals?
Yeah, let me just thank the board for coming together on some Saturday mornings and working on the board goals. And what the board attempted to do was align our goals with the superintendent's goals. And we have three areas of focus, instructional, operational, stakeholder connection, and satisfaction. Under instructional alignment, we have as goals, support the work of closing the achievement gap among subgroups, increase post-secondary readiness, decrease the number of suspensions, push for increase in this year's graduation rate. Under operational excellence, we have advocate and monitor MWB goals and strategy, involvement in the oversight and finances and capital improvement processes, advocate for the district's long-range facilities plans as it relates to the facilities modernization project, and support the hiring and evaluation of the best qualified staff. Under stakeholder connection and satisfaction, our goals are demand a customer-focused culture, support the development of the Rochester Surround Care Community Corporation, create and sustain partnerships, and support parent participation.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. And I do, again, just want to thank my colleagues. A lot of you in the audience may not know the board members as well as the superintendent for really coming on Saturday mornings when they could be with their families, relaxing, taking a day off, enjoying their days off from work, but really coming here bright and early in the morning to hash out these goals. So thank you, colleagues. Any, can I have a motion to accept our board goals for the year? Show move.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Any other questions or comments around the board goals?
Just one question.
Yes.
When you say for the year, does that mean, meaning?
School year.
Yeah. School year is what I'm, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, actually, we should say for the year. Yeah, that's a good question. Do we mean for the year or for the school year?
Well, the conversation in the meetings were that we do it based on the school year from September through July, through August, excuse me.
So for the school year? Good question. Student representative?
As far as the student achievement, I have.
If, yeah, if you have some goals, if you have some areas around it that you want to hash out, please feel free to definitely put them in writing and let the superintendent and the board know. I will ask you at the next board meeting exactly your thoughts around that, so be prepared for that, okay?
President Evans, are you going to attend the Board Governance Committee meeting on Monday?
I know I was.
Oh, I thought you had asked about attending that. If you are going to attend, let me just say that you can also bring those goals to that meeting.
When is that?
October 27th, Monday.
Monday.
Five?
Is it 5:30?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Mm-hmm. And we'd love to hear your thoughts about, around it at the next board meeting. Okay? All those in favor of board goals, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our board goes past. Also, point of personal privilege, Commissioner Elliott.
Thank you, President Evans. There are a couple of things, a couple of other meetings that I attended that I wanted to share with my colleagues. that I attended that I wanted to share with my colleagues and with, and with the public. I was a panel member at Nazareth Urban Institute on Education, and there, a part of that panel, there were a number of questions, about four questions that we were to address. However, we only got to one question. It was a conference that dealt with Vivian Paley's book, White Teachers. And the one question that it took, you know, two hours for us to really, we really got into the question was, how do teachers get to know thyself? So, there were a lot of questions in terms of biases, prejudices, learning styles, and how do, how does a teacher adjust who they are to be able to achieve academic excellence in, in the classroom? Members of that panel included Carlos Cabalada, who's the City's Economic Development Commissioner. He was also a former New York State Regent, a former superintendent for our district, Bill Calla. Vivian Paley was also a part of that panel, as well as our own Michelle Hancock, who participated in that. It was a very, very intense kind of, of session, a small session, but very, very intense. The next program that I attended, I did go out to the Careers in Construction that was held today. And when I first walked in the door, I knew that construction was not my thing, but there were 1,300 students in attendance. I actually happened to speak to about five of the young men who indicated, President Evans, that they thought that the work was too hard for them. But I also got an opportunity to speak to, went to one of the tables, a person by the name of Tom Mayers, who represents the Empire State Regional Council of Carpenters, along with a former Edison graduate by the name of Carlos. And I shared with them the comments that were made by those students. And the former Edison student responded by saying, well, yeah, it is hard at first, but they have to get trained. And so, once they get trained, they will know how to, you know, they operate machinery and what have you. He indicated, though, it's still hard work, but the training will help them to, to be able to do their job effectively. He also, and I will make sure that my colleagues get a copy of this, gave me a grid that, that's entitled, where do you want to be in 10 years? And what it shows is that in the Apprentice One phase, you begin to make $12.49 an hour as a base rate, but in total, about $19. And then, over 10 years, you can get to up to a base rate of about $25 an hour. With a total compensation package, that's about $40 an hour. And so, they don't have to, they only pay, you know, something like 36 cents per hour in apprenticeship training, and dues are like $1.87 per hour for dues. And he compared the kind of money that a student could make as a journeyman to those of us who have graduated from college and got student loans that we have to pay. And I suggested that maybe, President Evans, we can have the Empire State Regional Council of Carpenters to do a presentation so that we know the kinds of opportunities that our young people who may be interested in building trains that can be, can participate in. It's a lot of money that's involved in that. So, I will pass this along so we can take a look at it, because this makes it much more attractive, the amount of money that they are, that they are paying. And then, lastly, I want to bring up the Resolution 139 and Encompass, and talk about, talk about that. I was disappointed that it was brought to the full board for approval, particularly because it was tabled. And, President Evans, it was tabled for the same reasons that Commissioner White just enunciated. We did not get sufficient information in the finance meeting. The person who's a champion of it was not there. So, the person who was there to represent this particular resolution didn't have any of the answers. So, we tabled it. And the district, including the finance director, was trying to convince us that it had to be passed, and it had to be passed. And my decision was that we tabled it. We did not have the information. And the fact is that under super, former Superintendent Calla, we had spent $1 million with Encompass, and we didn't have any of the results. We did get the results after the fact, or got some information after the fact. The problem with that is, is you cannot vet it in committee, where you can really have some engagement or conversation around the results. I come back and see that the board approved it. So, that says to me that the superintendent, along with the president, had this thing moved out of committee. The concern I have with that is, is that it opens us up to the possibility of ineffective use of resources, impropriety, and a lack of sound business practices. The district and the superintendent cannot just feel that they can just circumvent democratic principles, and that's what I feel that happened. We had, we did not have the correct information, but it got passed anyway. And that is, in my view, a circumvention of board processes and of a democratic process. We didn't get the information. And it seems, and to me, we are not able to do our due diligence as elected officials who has an oversight responsibility. And the, and the fact is that we'd given them $1 million under Superintendent Calla, we're giving them $850,000 approximately, and we didn't get a chance to ask questions about this particular resolution. And so, for the record, I want to put it on the table, that that was tabled, and it got moved out without us having an opportunity, those of us in the finance committee, to be able to ask the kinds of questions in that form. And so, I have an issue with that, and I just want it to be noted for the record. Thank you.
I also want something to be noted for the record and put in the minutes also. Number one, I want all of my colleagues to understand something very clearly. Committees have absolutely no authority over any resolutions that come through them. They can come with an advisory opinion, they can come with an advisory vote, but the votes and the discussions on any piece of legislation or resolution that comes has to take place here. Similar is what we did tonight with the Piercing Learning Center Resolution. So, all of those conversations have to take place here, and they can be voted on here. One of the, one of the things I noticed when I first got to this board was committee chairs would often play this game of thinking that they had exercise authority that they didn't have and try to bottle up resolutions that were meant to come through the full board. The authority rests not with an individual committee or with an individual board member, but with this entire board. Secondly, as prescribed in the bylaws, the president of this board has the ability to set the agenda and add to it whatever he sees fit. And, and it is passed or considered only by four votes of the board. So, it's the board that makes the ultimate decision on whether or not something is passed, not a committee or not an individual. And that was what happened with Encompass. And that's what happened when we passed Encompass two months ago. So, I would just, Commissioner Elliott, I would just note that from the record from my end, because I want to make it clear that no laws or no rules, at least not from the bylaws that I read, were violated. And if that was the case, I would not have had that discussion on Encompass at the board, and I believe it passed unanimously. Commissioner Powell?
First, I'd like to remind everyone that the camera's off. We've gone past our two hours, so we're not broadcasting on, on the city cable channel. So, what we're doing here is airing our dirty laundry in front of the district staff. Unfortunately, that genie is already out of the bottle. The argument has already been laid forth.
President Evans?
But to that, I think I have the floor. But to that, I do want to add a couple of points. Number one, the committee on that particular date consisted of two people, only a quorum. And the argument that the committee lacked information is one perspective from one of the two persons present. I was personally fully prepared to vote yes for it. I voted to table as a courtesy. It could just as easily, I could have just as easily voted not to table, which would have forced a vote of one to, one and one, and therefore, the matter would have come through the committee with no recommendation. That would have been the ultimate outcome, had I not voted with Commissioner Elliott to table that resolution. There are really two worldviews being played out here. Commissioner Elliott sees things one way. I, as the other member of the committee, see things very differently, and there is absolutely no reason why the president of the board should be chastised for doing that which is within his right and his privilege in our bylaws.
President Evans?
Commissioner Elliott, and then I really want to wrap up this discussion, because we do have seven speakers.
Very well, very well. See, the issue is not about whether or not we follow the law. The issue is, are we doing the right thing by our community, by our taxpayers? And we did not get the information in a form by which I, as a board member, as an elected official, can represent this community and say that I have the information that I need in order to vote properly on this resolution. Laws may have been followed. For me, that's not the issue. The issue is, are we doing the right thing by giving an opportunity for discussion of this particular item? Now, here again, it is, it is back on the district, they bring it late. And so, we are rushed to push it. We're rushed, rushed to vote on it. The fact of the matter is, is that, President Evans, you should have pushed back on the superintendent and say no, because the committee didn't get a chance to vet it.
Commissioner, President.
And so, and so, that's where the issue become. Now, let me have it said that, the reason that I believe that the district felt comfortable in doing that was because we circumvented our own board process when we, when we brought up the student achievement thing, and didn't take that through the right process. So, in my view, you know, the district feels that they can just, it doesn't matter. We could just, we could circumvent the process. I'll just talk to the president. President Evans, I just believe respectfully, I say this, it should have come back where we can have more conversation in the finance committee. Thank you.
I'll just say respectfully, the conversation took, took place here, where it should take place, here.
One final comment, if I could, President Evans.
Yes, before I close this.
I just have to take issue with the idea that the administration took advantage of the board. The fact is that this, the Encompass project was approved by this board when we approved our budget. The questions that were being asked about its efficacy were premature by all rights. The time for the Encompass project to present validation of its achievement is at the end of the cycle, when they're asking for the next program-based budgeting renewal. We have, this is a project that's governed by program-based budgeting. The time, certainly, there's a point in time when we are reviewing our budget, that we have to make a decision as to whether a program lives up to its expectations or not. Our finance committee was not that time, and the administration acted appropriately to assume that it could go ahead with this, primarily because the board had already said yes during our budget deliberation process. The, really, this same finance committee meeting had been postponed three times. And no time prior to any of the three committee meetings were any questions about Encompass submitted, either to the committee chair or to the staff. In other words, the committees, the questions at committee were gotcha questions.
That's not true, Commissioner Powell.
The opportunity, it may not have been the intent, but when you withhold your questions and not present them so that the staff can submit answers in writing
That's not true, Commissioner Powell.
Prior to the committee meeting, they translate, for all practical purposes
That's not true, Commissioner Powell.
Okay. Thank you. This conversation is now closed, because I'm going to, I'm going to move to, 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 to questions, to our, to our distinguished community who's waited so long to be able to speak to us. So, we'll move to that. Our, each speaker will have three minutes. If you can come up to the podium. The first speaker is Mercedes Vasquez Simmons, and you will have three minutes. Mercedes, are you here? Come on up. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
No, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Superintendent Bizar, Commissioner Malik Evans, and members of the board. As a parent with children attending the city schools and as a graduate of the city school system, I'm deeply concerned about the issues within the district concerning my Latino students. Mr. White, you noted earlier that Latinos, Latino children account for 21% of the student population. While I was deeply saddened to find out that 38% of them were only, were only 38% were graduating. Many of the Latino students, English language learners, and typically need special education. We'll go back to the graduation rate. Once again, 38% of 21% are, are graduating. That's alarming, that 62% are dropping out.
That's not true.
The students who are dropping out fell behind on math and social studies. And it's been noted that their skillset, their skills were that of a 13-year-old. Now, just think about that. These are the children who are entering our society. Superintendent, Superintendent Bizar, members of the board, it seems to me that my Latino students are left behind. As a parent, I'm requesting that, that the district make an effort to ensure that our children have the same opportunity to succeed as the other children. I don't feel that this has been the case, and my kids are suffering. I recommend stronger academic assessments for their strength, strengths and weaknesses, along with rigorous tutoring, to help the children move to the next level. I encourage that proper resources be given to help with homework and also ensure that English language learners, students learn current material as you move forward. Ms. Elliott, I will, I'll have to quote you, because I thought it was, you're passionate, and I certainly feel that passionate with my students when you, when you said, money better not be an issue when it comes to our children. It's our responsibility to advocate for our children and to ensure that all of our children are treated equally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Vasquez Simmons. Mr. Charlie Richardson?
President Evans, Vice President White, other commissioners, and Mr. Bizar.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, Mr. Los, who is an outstanding youth, probably had to catch the bus home. I want to speak to you tonight, again, not complaining, but this is the third year that I have been here speaking on this, this piece. And I'm hearing it tonight, and I hear it a lot on the boards and net, that, you know, we are doing the best that we can. And in the community, as some of the board members feel, Mr. Bizar is really doing his job. It's just not enough of him yet, because there's too many jobs to be done. But one of the things that we need to do to work together is, we found out from the youth, and you got the report last month that Mr. Los bought in, remember that? Did anybody get a chance to read it?
Mm-hmm.
What a wonderful piece put together by our youth. Well, we're finding out that if Well, we're finding out that if kids are taught to what they are interested in, they may stay in school longer versus teaching to the tests. But we don't know in this school district, okay, what the kids want to do. I was out at that Edison, and I, I was really astounded at the Edison booth that they had. That fascinated me. We just don't have enough of that around. But if you take the sheet, it's a white sheet. I'm not going to go over everything here, but this white sheet should have been in the back. You'll see all the schools that are listed on here. This program has been done, and I didn't talk about the elementary school one, you can read it later, but this other one has been done in the suburbs for years. They get about a 93% return in the city school district for the third year, although it did get a little bit better this year. Please look at the schools and our percentage of returns that we get, because the youth aren't getting to fill them out. The principals don't believe in it, the counselors don't believe in it, and a lot of the teachers don't believe in it. It's just another piece of paper. What's an easy one to fill out in the report that comes back, that we can identify what these kids want to do? And what we're saying is, and unfortunately, Jim had to leave, I'd ask him to come in and really address with it. He's ahead of it. And there's companies out there that want these explorer units for 14- to 20-year-olds. But why can't the rest of our schools at least fill out a piece of paper, like the school without walls? You'll see they're at 81%, okay? Versus we have the Nathaniel Rochester Community School, zero. And they're all in the 20s and 30s. If we knew what these youth wanted to do, we could help them. There are mentors out there, like the architects now, are trying to find how many architects we have, students that want to be architects in the city, so they can put them in these explorer units to help them come along. Wouldn't it be easier that if you know a kid wants to do this or drive that heavy equipment, that a lot of us don't want to? And we talk to him that he's got to have math and that, he's got to be able to read blueprints and that. Would they not be interested? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim is not here, so we'll go to Glenny Williams. Is Glenny here? Okay. Is Jamie Bermudez here? Jamie?
One last thing, building hope together, all of us can do it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll get out of here.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I wrote something, but after sitting here for the last two hours, I've kind of, I kind of wanted to talk about something totally different. I am, I do want to focus on the graduation rate, especially our Latino youth. First of all, I come to you as a Latino member in the community. I also come to you as a member of a Latino agency that supports and helps Latinos and minorities across the board, and a graduate from the Rochester Public City Schools. One thing that I am noticing, as I look across this room, is that there is no voice of the youth here at all. And Superintendent Bizar said that these kids understand their, the recommendation of graduation when it comes to their, how much credits they have to graduate, and I'm here to tell you that they don't. No matter how many times you tell them, they don't know what that recommendation is. We are not giving that information to them in a way that they understand. Now, there are a couple of things that need to take place, from my point of view. I work at Edison Tech out of Iber American Action League. I oversee the Brenner-Bree Program, which is the Bree Mentoring Achievement Program through the Student Support Center. And one of the things that we do is we sit down and we talk to the youth. That's the most important thing. It's fine for us to sit behind our desk and say, "Well, this may work and that may work," but until we are sitting with our teenagers, our youth, the ones that we are making the decisions for and listening to their voice, really, things are not going to matter. Things are not going to make a difference in to where catering to what their true needs are. First and foremost, schools are no longer just a learning institute. They are a place for them to be safe. It is a safe haven for them, from all the elements of the world, okay? We have to consider that some of these teenagers are still coming from broken homes. They are out on the streets and they want to be safe. They are coming to these schools with the whole idea that someone is going to hold them accountable. Whether you, whether they act like they don't want to be held accountable, they want someone to hold them accountable. They want someone to listen, and so that's why they still come to school. We ask, "How is a 21-year-old still in school and they haven't graduated? How is a 17-year-old still in school but repeating the 10th grade for the third time?" Well, it's simple. They don't, they don't know how to go about getting this education, but they know that they don't want to be home, or they don't want to be in the streets, so they'd rather be in a place where they can come, where someone can listen to what their needs are, where someone can come and say, "Well, this is the way you can go about doing it," where someone can hold them accountable, and at the end of the day, someone can give them the tools that they need for the real world. The Student Support Center is something that absolutely works, okay? We have a lot of agencies working out of there. So my question is, what is it that the agency needs to do in order for us to be able to work with you guys? Because it's an old statement that says, you know, "It takes a, it takes a village to bring up a child." Well, we need to, we need to combine our forces and really concentrate on what those issues are at hand.
Thank you. Julie Clayton, is Julie here? Julie Clayton will be followed by the last speaker, Alfredo Gonzalez. Is he here? Is Alfredo here? Okay, you're the last speaker tonight.
Good evening, Superintendent Bizar, Mr. Evans, Mr. White, everyone on the council. First of all, I want to apologize for being out of order earlier, because I thought maybe it was scheduled at the wrong time, and thank you, Mr. White, or Mr. Evans, for setting me straight. I'm a school instructor with a school district. I've been teaching for 30 years, but about 20 years with the school district. I am currently an instructor with the Youth and Justice Program at the Monroe County Jail across the street. And thank you, Mr. White, for visiting us when you did, a couple months ago. Appreciate it. We have a lot of kids, a lot of adults and a lot of children with problems over there, and I teach the 16- to 20-year-olds, and it's, it's an interesting place to work, and I'm, I'm very glad that I'm, I'm there. We have a lot of very teachers that are really concerned and good teachers over there, I think. But my concern tonight is, on October 2nd, in the Democrat Chronicle, I saw the Standards of Discipline Code, and it said Superintendent Bizar was going to be presenting at tonight's meeting. I don't know if you have looked at that. It was in the paper, and it said, I think it's very commendable that we want to keep the kids in school. It's definitely commendable. We want to keep kids in school. We want to educate them in the most natural way that we can. But it said here, there are five levels of offenses. The first two were minor. Level three offenses included possession of alcohol or controlled substances, assault against a non-staff member, and sexual harassment, and serious fighting. The draft says that in level three and above, and above offenses, the police need to be called unless otherwise noted. And I imagine level three goes into in-school suspension. Included in level four are grand larceny, hate crimes, motor vehicle theft, and sale of controlled substances. They would necessitate parent contact, in-school suspension, and a recommendation for long-term suspension. Level five offenses include armed robbery, kidnapping, assault against district employees or possession, use, use, or sale of firearms. They receive the same treatment as level four and may result in expulsion. How many of you would like to be a teacher in those situations? Did anybody raise their hand? I don't think so. Would any of you? Okay, these kids are very violent, and, okay, if they're going to stay in the school, you have to have some, some support for those teachers. I know several of the teachers. It's like, I think they need support. You can't just throw them in a situation like that and have them be successful in that situation. I just want to say one more thing. A lot of my friends who are teaching in those situations are afraid to go to work every day, and we don't want to see anything like Peter Castle happen again. I'm very concerned, and that's why I'm here tonight. I would recommend you go visit those teachers as it is right now. Go visit those ISS teachers and see what they have to say to you. A lot of things are documented as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that, oh, yeah, our last speaker, Alfredo Gonzalez. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Alfredo Gonzalez. I've been a resident of the city of Rochester since 1989, and I'm a proud parent of one student that graduated from the first class of the IB program from Magnet High School. And also, very sad to say, I'm a stepfather of a son that got lost in the system because there was no intervention. So I want to talk about the Latino student high school dropout rate, in which we are in crisis, and it's unacceptable as a Latino member of this community and as a citizen of this community. We cannot afford to have that continue to happen. And one of the things that really concerns me the most is that, and question that I ask myself is, we talk about parent involvement all the time when it comes to issues affecting our children, but would you have one of the highest poverty rates in this community in a Latino population that parents have to worry about feeding the children? So, we need to stop that conversation about parent involvement. It's a community involvement. Everybody has the responsibility, like Jamie said a while ago, all of us together to make this happen. Let's stop blaming the parents that do not get involved, because when I tried to get involved with my stepson, it took me five phone calls to the, to the East High School until finally I showed up to demand a meeting. That's unacceptable, and I see happens every single time. So, it's our system, if we want our parents involved, it's really friendly enough to get them involved. We need to ask ourselves that question. And you mentioned, Mr. Brennan, a little while ago about that, that I'm glad that you mentioned that as a policy, how we treat our parents to be involved and be engaged and be part of the solution, and how we treat them. The other part of that is, we just had the Upstate Summit second year here last Friday, and I'm telling you that right now, the cities of Albany, Amsterdam, Urika, Buffalo, Syracuse, and Rochester, we're going to put a plan of action dealing with the high school dropout rate in every community. We need to stop the nonsense. We need to address it, and we will come to you with a plan of action, to be partners to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Mr. Superintendent, do you have something?
Just 30 seconds. I forgot to thank Senator Schumer for a grant. Linda, was your amount again for the AP, Advanced Placement? Thank you, for Advanced Placement. We're going to keep pushing our college-going culture. Thank you. Thank you. And the last, last piece, just one, again, I don't always like to respond to speakers' questions, but we need to make sure that we understand land data, because a 38%, but it's higher than 38% for Latinos. It's lower, it's too low, I'm not arguing that, but that does not equal a 62% dropout rate. It's a four-year graduation rate. Many of our kids who are English language learners graduate in five years or six years. So, because if 40% graduate in four years, it doesn't mean 60% dropout. Point of clarification.
Thank you. Our next meeting, next business meeting will be November 20th, 2008, at 6:30 PM. We have a special board meeting this coming Tuesday at 6:15? 6 o'clock. Special board meeting this Tuesday at 6 o'clock. Motion to adjourn, please. So, all those in favor? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.